May I rephrase? A great attempt to follow the United States of America into a republic with its chains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize that we have a four present. Do I have a motion to adopt your agenda?
Make a motion if you adopt the agenda.
I have a motion, Charles, I have a second. Don, second it. All those in favor, raise your right hand. The vote is now, we accept the minutes. Our new business is green matter solid waste disposal facility application. Application.
The county request for green matter solid waste disposal facility application for condition of use permit to develop a municipal solid waste disposal facility located on Louisian Union Road, Savannah, Georgia, three hundred and forty seven. And to make its recommendation to the script county board of commissioners regarding the application for a condition of use permit. Date of request is December the ninth tenth twenty nineteen. An application was filed. This script county planning is on the office side of Atlantic Waste Services, LLC, for a condition of use to develop a municipal solid waste disposal facility. Amendment to this script county is on the article seven, section three D dash twelve. County Code successive map zero eight seven, partial zero zero one, and zero zero two. These two partials located right here. This map is county part, so this is our official zoning map, and this is nine hundred eighty six point nine. What's in the on Louisian Union Road? Zoning Article Two, definition section two oh two has condition of use. A specifically designated end of zoning ordinance that may cause harmful or undesirable that comes around or near by property within a given zoning district. But within the opinion of the board of commissioners, to make the public health, safety, moral welfare order, comfort, convenience, appearance, prosperity, or general welfare of such uses where controlled as to the number, area, location, or relation to the neighborhood or in the alternative and the application of any other standard provided by this zoning ordinance. This case is only is eighty three. At this time, I'd like to enter into the record. Second application that was filed, Atlantic Waste Services. I'm entering into the record. I need the sub box. This is the second application for Atlantic Waste Services. And this will be amended application, amended application for Atlantic Waste Services. And this is the executive summary impact proposed landfill operations on Plantation Air Park. Just can't hear you back here. Oh, you can't? Okay. But this is the, um, this is the second amended application for Atlantic Waste Services. This is the third amended application for Atlantic Waste Services. This is the, uh, report as an executive summary impact proposed landfill operations on Plantation Air Park. This is a timeline of events that has transpired with this project, um, that we developed this report for. And what it is, is a timeline from July the ninth until March the fifth. So we cover all the dates of any court records or anything that we received them from Atlantic Waste, or we received them from the public that was in this document over here. Our departmental review. One thing I would like to say, I want to thank my sister for the hard work that she has put into this. She has really worked hard and diligently through this. It has just been fantastic through this other video. And I thank her for her service.
Thank you, Ben. Everything you've done. At this time, uh, the county attorney, Mr. Frank Jenkins, I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to speak from right here. Can you hear me all right in the back? Okay. Is that better? Does that work? I don't want to rely on it if it doesn't work. Well, I'm going to speak loud anyway, so you let me know if you're not hearing. Hold on a second. All right. Hey, that one works. Okay. I'm Frank Jenkins, and I'm an attorney from Cartersville, Georgia, and I've been asked by the county to represent the county in the, in the, considering the application, uh, for the landfill that's under consideration tonight. So I am just assisting from a legal standpoint, uh, the planning commission tonight. And, uh, the chairman and the commissioner have asked me to introduce some of the procedures that will be involved tonight, and I'd like to announce those to you at this time. It has been agreed by the planning commission because of, uh, well, the interest in this matter, that the time for presentation will be extended. And it, the applicant and those in favor of the application before the planning commission will have a total of one hour. And that hour will include their presentation and any rebuttal if they choose to have time saved at the end for the above. It also means that, uh, those in opposition to the application will have a full hour as well. So it's equal time for both sides. Uh, you will need to, uh, designate your speakers. There is no time limitation on any one speaker, but keep in mind that it's one hour total. And, uh, we will call the, uh, close the applicant, or close the opponents from speaking after that one hour. We'll do that very strictly. If you think you need any time to consider who would speak, then we can give that to you, uh, after the applicant has made its initial presentation. Uh, if you can just let us know, we may take a few minutes. But keep that in mind, that you have one hour, and so you have to make your, your own judgment about who speaks, and also about how long to speak. If you have any matters, any written matters, uh, that you wish to be made a part of the record of this proceeding, then you need to present that to the commission. Uh, you can do that at the end, or you can do it on your speaking. If you are, uh, you want to present something, uh, in writing, uh, that will be made a part of the record for consideration by the commission, so you need to do it at that time. Uh, we ask that all of your comments be directed to the chairman, uh, of the commission, and not to each other. Uh, it's preferable, and certainly proper decor in a public hearing like this, that we not get personal, uh, or that we not, uh, make comments against anybody or any person. We prefer that you make your comments relevant to the issues that are being considered by the planning commission, and that, uh, the planning commission only hears those who are called on to address the, uh, the planning commission. So please keep that in mind. We want to keep proper decor for this hearing. We ask too, that, uh, you sign up. They did have a sheet to sign up there. Okay, all right. So then you've signed, those of you who've signed either to speak for or to speak against, uh, we have your names, and you'll be called on from that list to speak. Now, we also ask that you be sure and give your address when you speak. Uh, so your name, say your name, and say your address, and then make your presentation that you wish to make at that time. Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. If anybody gets out of hand, tell them you can leave.
Yes, yes. If anybody gets out of hand, and I know that's not going to happen here, but if anybody decides they want to, uh, interrupt any of the proceedings, uh, then we would ask you to leave. Uh, so let's, uh, let's keep it directed toward the planning commission and the issues that are relevant for their consideration, uh, tonight. All right? Thank you.
Thank you all for coming here tonight. My name is Ben Waller. Anyways, I'd like to introduce Mr. Bob Lovett to, uh, speak on about a half to a few minutes and an hour to begin our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a little information. My name is Bob Lovett. I dress as four hundred Riverside Drive, unit two oh three, back in Georgia, three one and two ten. I have something I'd like to enter into the record. I've outlined the constitutional objections that the applicant has. Georgia law unfortunately requires that we put the commission, uh, the planning commission and, um, members of the board of commissioners, when we appear before them, on notice of all the objections that we know of, or may have at the time. I prepared a document to do that, so I don't have to go through each item before, so it don't take up too much time. I do have some items that I do need to go into the zoning document. May I present to you, Mr. Chairman, for the record? Mr. Chairman, I have a little information. I was going to do, uh, warn you that this is a application for condition of use presented toward the law, and we recognize to be a quasi-indivisible process in which you apply criteria, objective criteria to the application to determine whether it meets the standards, the public standards, uh, in your ordinance. I'd also like to remind you that, uh, the applicant, and any other applicant here, is entitled to a fair and impartial hearing. And we ask that you keep in mind that I'm here in tonight because a lot of money, time, effort, blood, sweat, tears have gone into this presentation. And we ask you to keep in mind, for your both sides. The first unwritten objection is based on section four fourteen I of the zoning ordinance. That's something that provision, um, provides that the commission shall hold a hearing if it so chooses on the application for condition of use, and determine whether to recommend an amendment, um, make a recommendation to the board of commissioners on the amendment. An amendment, as it's defined in your act, is an application for rezoning. We're not here on a rezoning. But assuming that this provision does apply, it provides for, um, a sixty day period from the time the application was filed, with your, your permission, uh, for you to make a determination and send a written notice of your recommendation on the application to the board of commissioners. I wanted to, for the record, state that the application for condition of use was filed on July ninth, two thousand and nineteen. All the additional applications which were referred to previously, um, by Mr. Hagan as amendments, were not amendments, but simply submissions to supplement that application. On July ninth, the same day that the application was submitted, the board of commissioners passed the first moratorium orally. It was not an item that was advertised, it was not an item that appeared on the agenda, and no written record or resolution was ever made of that, that, um, that moratorium. The stated purpose, according to the reported session, was to give the county time to adopt the new solid waste management plan. On September twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, the zoning administrator sent a record, a letter to Atlantic Waste Services, the applicant, which, uh, stated that the application was accepted, was not accepted, excuse me. Then on September seventh, two thousand and nineteen, um, board of commissioners, in a, in a call of meeting, uh, voted to extend the moratorium a hundred and twenty days, based on the recommendation of the zoning administrator, such stating that he needed more time to get together an equation for the solid waste management plan. Um, the resolution that was struck and signed afterwards contained extraneous information, which we object to, that was not mentioned or decided by the board of commissioners at that time. Um, based on the action of the board of commissioners, Atlantic Waste filed a lawsuit. On November fourth, two thousand and nineteen, Atlantic Waste offered to dismiss the lawsuit. This board of commissioners agreed to terminate the moratorium and proceed with consideration of their application. On November twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, the county voted to lift the moratorium and did, did so in agreement with the offer that was made by Atlantic Waste Services. The lawsuit was dismissed November fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. The date is March the fifth, twenty twenty. So one hundred and eleven days have expired since the moratorium lawsuit, um, was just, the moratorium lawsuit was dismissed. A hundred and ninety-five days has expired since July ninth, the July ninth application was filed. Section four fourteen I provides that P and Z commission make enough a public hearing under fourteen eight, four fourteen eights, and four fourteen I says that, um, thereafter, the commission is to make a recommendation on a proposed amendment to the board of commissioners within sixty days, as I stated before. and information and data that we've submitted, uh, to support this application, I don't want this board to pretend we're laboring under any misunderstanding. We're appearing here and labeling our right to claim that the recommendation be that the amendment was approved, the application for amendment was approved. That's what your ordinance says. And section nineteen oh four says that the powers and duties of this commission is to, is to advise the board of commissioners, um, on applications for amendments by written recommendation. And if you fail to do so within the sixty day period, then the applicant is entitled to be considered to be approved by this commission. Any other, any other decision tonight, um, in the now, or recommendation, um, in the now of the application will violate the due process laws of the federal constitution and the, and the state of Georgia, uh, due process provisions of the constitution of state of Georgia. Now, um, secondly, Article seven, under the Ag Rule Residential Section of your code, under section seven oh three, B two, I'm sorry, B twelve, states that condition of use is required for a solid waste disposal facility. Solid waste disposal facility is a term of art that's been adopted since the state of Georgia adopted the Georgia Propagated Solid Waste Management Act in nineteen ninety, and it's been the same since the adoption. The planning, uh, staff has prepared a review, which was submitted less than thirteen days prior to the date of this hearing to the applicant, which applies to sanitary landfill provisions under subtitle B, um, part of the ordinance. Um, the federal rules under subtitle B, which is found in Board CFR two fifty-eight, does not address criteria for sanitary landfills. Sanitary landfills are no longer defined under the provisions of that law. Subtitle B adopted new criteria for the operation, design, and, um, siting, uh, new landfills. Primarily, the new landfills are required to be lined with a double line. The, uh, sanitary landfills, the old sanitary landfills under forty CFR two fifty-seven, um, did not comply with a line. Different types of waste are allowed in sanitary landfills that aren't allowed to be taken in subtitle B landfills. There are apples and oranges, yet the, um, zoning commission, your commission and staff is elected to apply the sanitary landfill standards to this site, despite what we require. And we would object to that based on, um, the applicant's due process rights as guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States under the Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution of the State of Georgia, in Article one, section one. Finally, section nineteen oh two provides that the, uh, powers and duties of the zoning administrator should be to provide upon the services related to this ordinance. Eight says that the zoning administrator has a duty to provide initial information about the ordinance upon request with any applicant. F says that the zoning administrator shall offer practical suggestions on how to comply with the requirements of this ordinance. And G states that the zoning administrator should maintain complete records concerning this ordinance, meaning the zoning ordinance and related matters, and make such records available to the public upon request. Now, the zoning administrator in this case, um, the people in his office, county employees, and officials have repeatedly refused to speak to Mr. Ben Wall, Mr. Jeffries, employees and representatives of Atlantic Waste Services, uh, stating that they were prohibited from communicating with them, um, because they were associated with Atlantic Waste Services and had filed the application. Atlantic Waste Services has filed a lawful petition, an application to develop and use property as is their right. And as any other applicant has the right, and to confer and communicate with the zoning administrator to get information, practical help or suggestions on how to comply with the zoning ordinance, and get copies of documents such as those indicated that the county complied with the zoning procedures act when they adopted amended zoning ordinance. Instead, all Atlantic Waste got was a sixty-two page department review, departmental review of its application thirteen days before the hearing, this hearing. And we were asked to respond to it before the hearing. Atlantic Waste objects, um, to being, to, to the departmental review. They have done the best they can to respond to each item set out in the, in that departmental review, and objects to the consideration of the editorial comments, the unsubstantiated information, the untrue factual information, and the lack of empirical data. of the State of Georgia in Article one, section one. Finally, section nineteen oh two provides that the powers and duties of the zoning administrator should be to provide upon the services related to this ordinance. Eight says that the zoning administrator has a duty to provide initial information about the ordinance upon request with any applicant. F says that the zoning administrator shall offer practical suggestions on how to comply with the requirements of this ordinance. And G states that the zoning administrator should maintain complete records concerning this ordinance, meaning the zoning ordinance and related matters, and make such records available to the public upon request. Now, the zoning administrator in this case, the people in his office, county employees, and officials have repeatedly refused to speak to Mr. Ben Law, Mr. Jeffries, employees and representatives of Atlantic Waste Services, stating that they were prohibited from communicating with them because they were associated with Atlantic Waste Services and had filed the Atlantic Waste Services filed a lawful petition, an application to develop and use a property as is their right. And as any other applicant has the right, and to confer and communicate with the zoning administrator to get information, practical help or suggestions on how to comply with the zoning ordinance, and get copies of documents such as those indicated that the county complied with the zoning procedures act when it adopted amended zoning ordinance. Instead, all Atlantic Waste got was a sixty-two page department review, departmental review of its application thirteen days before the hearing, this hearing. And we were asked to respond to it before the hearing. Atlantic Waste objects to being to the departmental review. They have done the best they can to respond to each item set out in that departmental review, and objects to the consideration of the editorial comments, the unsubstantiated information, the untrue factual information, and the lack of empirical data in reaching wide conclusions that appear over the course of the entire document. Finally, AWS suggests that the county's refusal of constitution violation, the county's refusal to communicate and to respect their petition, constitution violation of the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States and the Georgia Constitution, as well as due process follows the Fourteenth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, Article one, section one of the Georgia Constitution. I appreciate the comment. Thank you. Thank you for your consideration.
Ladies, thank you all. My name is Ben Law. I'm with Atlantic Waste. I'm going to present to you tonight our presentation. So, I can look and be blocked there. So, what are we proposing? We're proposing an eighty-four acre phase development of a municipal solid waste disposal facility. That's eighty-four acres, that's it. We're not asking for nine hundred and seventy-five acres or whatever could be a landfill. Total site is nine hundred and fifty-six acres, less than ten percent of the total land we use for solid waste disposal. We're going to have thirty-five, forty employees, truck drivers, and operators. Some of you are asking why are we here? So, we discussed the application agreeing by those, as it contains in the AG three conditional use zoning ordinance. In order to create a conditional use, a parcel must meet these conditions. The conditions are that the site is geotechnically suitable, and the site complies with the Solid Waste Management Act of nineteen ninety as amended. So, is the site geotechnically suitable? Yes. Both Atlantic Waste Engineers and Scraven Counties have hired consultants True Ground Environmental, have confirmed, based on testing and soil borings and other known information, the disposal footprint area, the site is geotechnically suitable for a landfill. The boarding counts are adequate for solid waste disposal at this juncture. That term adequate was omitted from your report. True Ground stated that these borings were adequate, and they determined that it was geotechnically suitable at this point in juncture. Only the Georgia EPD can determine complete geotechnical suitability, and we must have a conditional use approval from the county first before we can apply to Georgia EPD. So, you'd have to have the conditional use before you can get a geotechnical suitability. So, does the site comply with the state of Georgia's Solid Waste Management Act of nineteen ninety as amended, Circuit fourteen? These are the siting requirements that the state imposes as part of the Solid Waste Management Act. They go over floodplains, wetlands, significant groundwater recharge areas, river corridors, fault zones, seismic areas, and unstable areas, protected mountains, airports, and bombing ranges, zoning, national historic sites, camp, private recreational camps, other county municipality borders, and other landfills. The development will not impact the one hundred year floodplain. There is only no activity, no landfill, no buildings, no bar pits in the floodplain. This development will not impact or destroy any weapons on this site or any other location. This development will not impact or destroy any Carolina bays. There are no Carolina bays, according to the Georgia Department of Natural Resources. That is what the Georgia Natural Department of Natural Resources stated. I know there was somebody that said that it appears that there's a Carolina bay. Even if there is a Carolina bay, we are not going to impact it. It will be protected. This development will not be within two miles of a significant groundwater recharge area. That is the state mandate. This development not will be within one hundred feet of protective river corridor. This development will not impact any protected mountains. This development will not be built within two hundred feet of a fault line. This development will be built to withstand the horizontal movement in the very unlikely event of an earthquake. Both LiDAR and soil tests determine that the area designated for a footprint, a landfill footprint, is not an unstable area. This was confirmed both by Atlantic Waste and True Ground. And your department review states that there are possibly unstable areas. That is not the truth. This development will not be within a water supply or air shed or wellhead protection zone, but will still have a synthetic liner and ABH collection system. This development will not be within ten thousand feet of plantation airports, airport. That is the state law. You cannot build a landfill within ten thousand feet of the property line and my property line, and we are away from that. We will discuss airports later. Also, the airport is not subject to the six mile rule because it does not have scheduled air carrier traffic. You need to have Delta or Legion or JetBlue or somebody like that utilizing your airport and have more than fifty percent usage from air carrier to apply the six mile rule. Third, there's no bombing range within Scraven County. We are more than five thousand yards away from a national historic site. We're actually over about a hundred and fifty. There are no cities or counties within half a mile to notify or gain approval, and there are no other landfills within two miles of the site. There are no private recreational camps within one mile of the site. Therefore, we meet all standard criteria from the state of Georgia at this juncture for granted conditional use when it applies to siting. Those are the state laws, and that is what your zoning ordinance states. So, why is there a need for a facility in Scraven County? The northern section of the coastal plan of Georgia is running out of MSW landfill airspace. It's projected to be out probably within the next ten years. Scraven County All Green Services, Personal Trash Service, and Atlantic Waste could be a direct haul from waste trucks within the county or only eighteen miles from the transfer station. The facility will provide a needed piece of infrastructure in the area rather than trucking waste a hundred and thirty miles round trip as you're currently doing going into Richmond County. Currently, the county and the city's sub-contractor collection and disposal on private business and existing county are both at the mercy of other municipalities or companies for waste disposal. To have a Scraven County owned facility, we've heard that people say, I'm not opposed to a landfill, just one owned by a private company. To have a Scraven County owned facility would increase your cost by nine hundred thousand dollars a year disposing your waste by yourself. That's what these things cost. A private facility will provide millions of dollars in revenue to Scraven County each year and ensure that the county is no longer at the mercy of someone else and will also provide high amount of dollars to the local economy. Based on publicly available data, the current system is a strain on the governmental resources within the planning area. As evidence, the county doubled the solid waste fee to taxpayers while reducing collection sites. This facility will provide millions of dollars in revenue and savings to Scraven County each year and ensure that the county's citizens no longer have to pay the hundred dollar fee if the county commissions their true facility. Impact on waste reduction and recycling efforts. The facility will have a classroom able to hold up to forty people for safety meetings. This room could be utilized as a classroom for hands-on educational waste reduction, recycling, composting, farming, and other environmental education as well in the cant on a truck driver. This site could be a drop-off location for recyclable material. No, we are not resorting or processing recycling material due to market factors as well as non-compliance with Scraven County zoning code. Recycling facilities that process, bale, sort are not allowed in the AG three zoning district. So, here are some concerns that we've heard about this project. You've got odor and air quality and health. You've got groundwater and drinking water, surface water, traffic, air, court, birds, and other vectors, property values, visibility and height, and waste input, hazardous waste and coal ash. So, I'm going to talk about odor. One of the concerns people may have about landfills is odor. Landfills can have odors. However, properly operated, modern line landfills such as the ones in Augusta and the City Savance landfill near Southridge do not have odor problems. In fact, odor complaints are the exception rather than the rule. Here are a few reasons why some landfills have odor problems. Cover material. Landfills do not have persistent, landfills that do have persistent odor problems do not apply enough cover data. The proposed Green Meadow facility will have excellent source of cover. We have over seven hundred acres of available soil to use as cover material. We will never run out. Types of waste. Types of waste accepted can have a serious impact on odor. We know which types of waste cause odors. Waste water treatment sludge is the number one contributing factor to odor. Therefore, Atlantic Waste has proposed to limit this waste to five percent or less. There are other facilities in the area that take in about four times that much, and they do have odor problems. So, therefore, we feel this is as a condition to awarding conditional use, so we add the condition to minimize wastewater sludge to five percent or less. That's something we can talk about as a condition. We will have a proactive gas recovery and treatment, and this will be installed earlier than required by state law. Also, many landfills that do have odor problems have residents living half a mile away or less. Green Meadow's closest resident is three quarter miles away from the disposal footprint, and there is only a total of five homes within one mile of the landfill footprint. People are concerned about whether the air around the site will be safe to breathe. The EPA and Georgia EPD have considered this and evaluated this extensively, and have set laws and regulations on air permitting, waste input, and gas recovery and flaring to ensure the protection of human health and the environment. That's what the laws do. They regulate what is safe. They are put in place because they know what is safe. They test it constantly. The closest home from the waste disposal footprint, like I said earlier, is three quarters of a mile away. By law, only five hundred feet is required. This facility will be protected for the health and the environment surrounding the site as well as relates to air quality. Groundwater. The site has very dense clays underneath the sandy soil. The closest nearest downgrading well is one mile away from the landfill footprint. Based on our studies from IBS and confirmed by Scraven County's consultant, True Ground, it is extremely unlikely and approaching impossible that a subtitle D municipal solid waste landfill, designed and construction in accordance with state and federal requirements, will contaminate the groundwater in the upper Floridian aquifer where nearby agricultural and drinking wells are sown. Both Atlantic Waste and True Ground at this point feel that is adequate, and the soil bores are adequate, and they feel that that is correct. If it's not, the facility will not get built. Simple as that. If it's not geotechnically suitable and soils aren't there, it will not get built. Surface water. Atlantic Waste will be required to have an industrial stormwater permit. Based on engineering models and made work that hits the landfill but does not come in contact with the waste will be diverted to a series of ditches. Those ditches will run into a sedimentation pond, then another man-made pond, and finally a natural weather pond. In the event of a catastrophic overflow, flood, overflow will be diverted into a bar pit area. At no point is it anticipated that stormwater will hit the landfill to flow into Brady Branch or the Yegi River. Impacts on vehicle traffic and public safety. As part of this project, we will improve the intersection of Louis D Newton Road and Georgia Highway seventeen. Atlantic Waste will also pave and maintain some forty-one hundred feet of Louis D Newton Road. Atlantic Waste will post speed limit signs and speed bumps if necessary on Louis D Newton Road. Atlantic Waste would prefer to close Louis D Newton Road at Dorsey Clark or adding minimum reroute Louis D Newton Road along the western property line. We have confirmed that Scraven County does have enough light away for us to use, utilize, and pave Louis D Newton Road. The average daily truck traffic on Highway seventeen is nearly fifteen hundred vehicles a day. Twenty-two percent of that is heavy truck traffic. Georgia DOT has also recognized that this is a truck route and that there is going to be increased volumes coming through the coming years. Traffic continued as a full truck will be every twenty minutes coming from Oliver and a full truck every forty minutes coming from three oh one. There will be no vehicles coming from Dorsey Clark Road. We've heard people worrying about whether or not there's going to be trucks coming in from, you know, the north part of the site, and that is not going to happen. Airport concerns. Bird strikes and future growth. The growth and development of airports is in direct function of the market population relative to wealth, attractions, and employment centers. Growth in general aviation is somewhat tracking the same criteria are directly related to commercial and industrial strength of the local economy in order to warrant the desirability of these facilities. Atlantic Waste has contacted all fifteen airports in Georgia that have an MSW landfill within one point eight and five point nine miles. We've talked to their managers, just like we're doing. None of them have had any issues relating to bird strikes or failure to get funding. I know that is something that you're going to hear about, is potentially losing funding. That has not been shown to be the case, and we have talked to DOT about that. There is already a bird hazard at Green Meadows due to the death of cows and exposure consensus during cavity. Next, you can show that there might be some discussion about whether or not we're going to be in the approach and departure zone. The rings, the furthest ring is ten thousand feet away from the site, and the orange is the approach. We are not in the approach zone of the airport. We have had a FAA controller give his personal opinion. I called the van, I just happened calling, and he wrote a letter that said that he did not see this being a problem. It's not an official record from the FAA, but they have said that they do not perceive this as an issue. Property values. Based on Atlantic Waste's knowledge of market factors, of markets elsewhere, in Atlantic Savannah, the intended use will not reduce property values. While understanding that this is a concern of property owners nearby, Atlantic Waste has reviewed other landfills across the country that have developed a successful property value assurance program. And therefore, Atlantic Waste is willing to further ensure that property values will be protected by providing a property value protecting assurance program, which will be added as a condition of the conditional use of approval. For example, if you have a subject property appraised for two hundred thousand dollars and it sits on the market for six months and doesn't sell at the appraised value, and after it doesn't sell after six months, it sells for, say, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, we will then recomp, we will then compensate the seller the twenty thousand dollar difference. We've seen these programs, they're legally binding entities that you agree with, property owners that are around the site. We know who the property owners are, and we can mail them, and we can get them to sign an agreement, if they're willing to participate to where that protects them. Visibility and height. Atlantic Waste reduced the maximum height early in the process via drone flights that showed that the maximum potential height of two hundred and thirty feet would be visible from two and a half miles away. So, Atlantic Waste reduced the maximum height to a hundred and fifty feet above ground level to ensure that landfill would not be seen from any residents or road from the county. There will also be a two hundred foot undisturbed rotated buffer that will be planted along property lines. Waste input. People are concerned about what waste goes in there. There will be no coal ash that will be going into this facility, no hazardous waste, maximum of only five percent wastewater sludge, that's the odor cause you're all saying. No waste, another one we'll be talking about, is no waste can be accepted if generated further than a hundred miles. There are folks that are concerned that we're going to be importing trash from New York or Florida or somewhere, and so what we're saying is as a condition of this, you need to put down that, hey, no waste if it's generated beyond a hundred miles. Atlantic Waste recommends having an oversight board of county citizens and or employees who will work at and or monitor compliance with federal, state, and local laws and regulations and other stuff. I don't mind if Damon Mullis comes here on a month, on a monthly basis of the county and then employs somebody to where they're concerned about what comes in, making sure that we're compliant. We can do that. That is not a problem. The use of this property and adjacent property uses. The eighty percent of the property that will remain pasture, fields, and timberland and wetlands will be there for the entirety of the project. The dairy or beef cattle operation will remain on the property, and if they choose to leave, we will look to a local farmer to farm the property. The property is one hundred percent surrounded by agricultural use, and ninety-two percent is in ten-year conservation use. The landfill will not be detrimental to this property's ability to, or to the neighboring farms' ability to farm or grow timber, or to the general health, safety, and welfare of the residents, neighbors, and facility workers. Compliance with the laws and regulations of the local and state and federal agencies ensure that the health and safety of residents and workers will be intact. The Coastal Regional Commission states that this use is consistent with Scraven County's newly adopted joint comprehensive plan as determined by author of the plan, the CRC. This satisfies the needs and goals of the county in your plan. Your staff omitted this in your review. The CRC said that this site was consistent, and this use was consistent with your comprehensive land use plan, and that was omitted from your report. Georgia Southern School of Business states- Georgia Southern School of Business study private regional landfills and rural settings has also confirmed that the modern landfill use is compatible in agricultural use districts. One of the criteria is that you must not have any depreciating effects that are greater than the benefits or the need of the use. The closest home from the landfill is 3,660 feet. Like I said, there's a total of five homes within one mile of the footprint. The site will be completely buffered by a minimum of a 200-foot undisturbed buffer that the facility will never be seen from the current or existing home or county road even after the maximum proposed height of 150 feet. Based on compliance with federal, state, and local laws and regulations, any possible depreciating effects will be temporary and minimal. Atlantic Waste has hired a third-party appraiser who came to the conclusion that rural, in rural settings, landfills do not cause property values to go down. Here are some examples of landfills that have experienced growth around them and this is in the state of Georgia. This is Barrow County. This is a republic MSW site in northeast Georgia. The green here shows where there's no growth and then 20 years later, there's schools, there's industrial parks, there's residential areas, all surrounding within one mile of the site. The city of Savannah. This is the Dean Forest MSW. This is one about a mile and a half from my office. This site here, there is new growth in the Southbridge neighborhood and the big industrial park to the north. So there can be growth around a landfill despite what people think. You have the Cav County. This is in the Atlanta metro area. You can see in the green areas, there was no growth in 1993. There was no homes. And then in 2019, there's homes everywhere. Augusta. This is Richmond County. This is the landfill where your waste is going to now that people are concerned about. You can see here, there's a big green section and then there's the red. Look at that now. So this is where your waste is going to now. So the people that are concerned about a landfill, this is where your waste is going now and you can see that it is very, very close. There's over 200 homes within one mile of that site and there's churches and baseball fields, all within two miles. What are the benefits or the needs of this facility? County needs to dispose annually of 12,000 tons of solid waste in the most economically and environmentally safe way possible. Facility will give the county long-term solid waste disposal at little to no cost. This county will no longer be at the mercy of some other county to dispose of its waste. The city of Savannah and Scraven County will save at least $600,000 a year on disposal costs. The host fees paid to the county will be at a minimum, minimum, it could be more, of $2.50 per ton for MSW, which we estimate to be over $1 million per year and can grow every year. The estimated, there will be an estimated $120,000 a year from local sales tax because the current agricultural usage generally doesn't pay sales tax because they got the gate cards. We are going to have to pay sales tax on all the products we buy that go into Scraven County. There will be an estimated $60,000 a year in expected annual property taxes. So the total input after 30 years of what we estimate the total life to be will be over $100 million that will be going into Scraven County's budget, just the county itself. And the total over the 25 to 30 years, we think we will spend close to $200 million in this county on jobs, fuel, tires, all kinds of stuff and the county's. There are more benefits to landfill. We'll have 35 to 40 high-paying jobs averaging $55,000 a year and there will be another 20 more jobs added according to Georgia Southern. The educational and empowerment opportunities for citizens to get training for truck driving and equipment operation and mechanics. Atlantic Waste will pay up to 10 scholarships to the Yegichi Tech CDL school. Atlantic Waste would like to have a residential drop-off center. No soaring or processing, we understand. Park, we'd like to park and keep Scraven beautiful to clean up at least seven derelict homes per year. So in all, we propose these additional proposed conditions to be added to this. We understand that you guys are fearful of a landfill. We know that there are problems with some landfills. We want to design and add these conditions to our approval if we are granted approval and effort to protect Scraven County and they are. The owner shall comply with solid waste management act of 1990 as amended and design and construction and operation of solid waste disposal system. The waste disposal footprint shall not exceed 84 acres. Shall not exceed it. The elevation of the landfill should not be higher than 150 feet. No coal combustion residual or coal ash shall be accepted for disposal. No more than 5% wastewater sludge shall be accepted for disposal by total waste volume input in tons. No waste will be accepted if generated beyond 100 miles. The EPD 200-foot buffer shall be undisturbed and vegetated and planted with existing evergreen trees. The owner shall upgrade and pave and maintain Louis D. Newton Road as denoted on the EPD approved divot operation plan. The owner shall perform regular litter cleanup along Louis D. Newton Road and one mile in either direction along Highway 17. The owner shall work with the board of commissioners to ensure that property values are protected within one mile of the waste disposal footprint. The owner shall develop the best management practices for a wildlife deterrent plan. And finally, the owner shall develop a concerned citizens board or hire a county employee to review the operation and compliance of EPD laws. And then finally, the hours of operation shall be from 5:00 AM to 7:00 PM Monday from body and 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Saturday and then on Sunday. Thank you for your time. I will let my time defer to the opposition's debate.
Do you think, people, that want to oppose? Is there any chance I could go representing the airport because I need to put some backs on the board? Would anybody have a problem with that? Thank you.
Be loud enough so we can hear you.
I will.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Dewey Martin. 67400, Savannah, Georgia. And I would like both my handouts and my comments to be on the record, please. My name is Dewey Martin. I've served with the Air Force Authority for a number of years. I've been its chairman since 2012. I'm here tonight to express the authorities' opposite proposal landfill is located. The Savanah State Airport is owned by both the city and the county and it's managed by an independent airport authority. I retired from US Air Force, Air National Guard as command pilot with approximately 10,000 hours flying tactical military aircraft, mostly 3130s, Es and Hs, flying low-level waltz, which y'all are familiar with around here, and airdrops through this area. I retired from Delta Airlines, 2005, as a 767 yard captain. International flight ops with approximately 24,600 hours. That means I've been flying more than some people have been alive. That does not make me an expert, but I know about aviation and I'm going to give you, if you allow me, the benefit of some of that knowledge. Regarding the letter from Jacksonville that we got, that's from Jacksonville controller that y'all got last week and I got a copy of it. It was a letter solicited by Atlantic Waste Services, contacted an air traffic controller named Kenton Thomas. I called Mr. Thomas because when the letter arrived, it wasn't on an official FAA letter then. So I called Mr. Thomas, was able to run him down because I wasn't sure if he actually existed. And he confessed to me or told me that he was a high-level controller. He worked from 10,000 feet to 18,000 feet, which meant, I said, are you aware of the low-level traffic in and around Savanah? Are the military traffic around Savanah? He said, no, he only worked at higher levels. I called him once again this weekend. He didn't really want to talk to me, evidently he'd been badgered. And I'm assuming that there's some disciplinary action from the FAA headed his way, which I'm very sorry for. I wish that had not happened. He told me then that he only worked IFR. I'll explain what that is and just many. He only worked IFR and not BFR traffic, which once again, if he works IFR, he's working jets, he's working turbo props, he's working BFR, he's working larger aircraft, the 74A airplanes, the corporate jets that land at the airport. He sees those guys because they file IFR, flat planes. The two types of flat planes, this is all important. It's a lot of stuff, it's all important. They're called BFR flight planes and IFR flight planes. BFR flight planes is you take off from this airport and you say, well, I want to go to Millisville. Well, you just get your roadmap and you take off and you fly to Millisville. FAA doesn't have anything to do with you unless you request flight follow. IFR, I want to go to Atlanta. I file an instrument flight rule. I'm under the control of an aircraft controller at all time. He tells me where we go, what to do, what to look out for about the other traffic. The majority of the traffic, 90% of the traffic coming to Plantation Airport, Savanah Airport, Scraven County, is visual traffic. They take off from Savannah and the controller will vector you around until they get you out of traffic, maybe 10, 15, 20 miles, and he'll clear you direct to Plantation or wherever you want to go. And you're on your own, you change your squawk on your IFF and here we go. So this letter, while his intention might have been good, he has absolutely no way of knowing the amount or the traffic that comes to our airport, which can be significant. I'm going to refer now, Mr. Wall was confused on something in here that is very confusing, the 10,000, 5,000-foot rule. I'm going to refer you, what I'm referring to are regulations. Some of it that you read in your handout, it'll say, this has no authority, we cannot do this, we cannot do that, it's just advisory only. And if you go down a little bit, it's going to say, unless you take federal money. Once you take federal money, it's law. It has teeth. We have taken $4 million since 2005 of federal grant money to include your airport. Okay? We've taken that money, we are obligated. I refer you, gentlemen, in the handout that I sent you after the letter is called AC Advisory Circular Number 150 slash 5200 dash 34 Alpha. And there's more, okay? In enacting this legislation, Congress expressed concern that a MSWLF, wasted metal, cited near an airport poses a potential hazard to aircraft operations because such waste facility attracts birds. Statistics support the fact that bird strikes pose a real danger to aircraft. An estimated 87% of the collisions between wildlife and civil aircraft occur on or near airports when aircraft are below 2,000 feet above ground level. Collisions with wildlife at these altitudes are especially dangerous as aircraft pilots have minimal time to recover from such emergencies. Here is waste up, here is doorway. From property line to property line, I think it's just a little over three and a half miles. Is that correct? Just a little over three and a half? Five miles is the law. Five miles in the regulation, not three and a half, not 10,000 feet. But that is confusing, that 10,000-foot rule. We'll get to that in a minute. It goes on to say, in AC 150 slash 5200 dash 33, now this becomes a governing thing after 3400, okay? It recommends against locating municipal solid waste landfills within five statute miles of an airport if the landfill may cause hazardous wildlife to move on to or through the airport's approach or departure. That doesn't mean the end of the runway. That means my approach into that airport or my departure from that airport. Seven, this, we're still in, I referred to 33, but now we're still in 34, okay? Number seven on your handout, leave through and try to keep up with me or remember to do it when you get home. Gentlemen, airport operators that have accepted federal funds have obligations under federal grant assurances to operate their facilities in safe manner and must, must, not if I want to, have to, must comply with standards prescribed in advisory circulars. It says advisory, but it just said, I must, including landfill site limitations contained in AC 150 slash 5200 dash 33 Charlie. This actually has caused Suggestor in Washington that they just sent out a new 150 slash 5200 dash 33 Charlie came out two weeks ago to replace Bravo and it's because of this. By accepting this grant money, we are required to adhere to these advisory circulars for 20 years after each grant and by not doing so could require that the total, as of January 1st, of $3,636,390 be returned by the FAA. Somebody can say I won't lose my grant money, but that takes place in Washington, DC. It doesn't take place in here. My insurance does not come in here. My knowledge of landfills within 1.8 miles and are still active and people get grant money, that does not come in here. I have to see that in writing from somebody else and I haven't seen it from the Georgia DOT. In fact, they were very worried about it. All right, this is the aforementioned AC, y'all will notice by heart and memory, AC 150 slash 5200 dash 33 Charlie. The subject is hazardous wildlife attractants on or near airports. The purpose, this advisory circular, now remember it's not advisory plus anymore. You folks, it's mandatory. Provides guidance on certain land uses that have the potential to attract hazardous wildlife on or near public use airports. Application, I guess the part that Mr. Wall's looking for there, this, it could be really confusing because it confused me for a long time. The Federal Aviation Administration recommends the guidance in this AC for land uses that have the potential to attract hazardous wildlife on or near public airports. Confusion, this does not constitute a regulation, nor is it mandatory and is not legally binding in its own right. It will not be relied upon as a separate basis by the FAA for affirmative enforcement and action, yah, yah, yah. But what do we know from the previous page? It's mandatory for us because we accepted federal funds. Y'all have any questions on any of this so far? We've accepted federal money, so we are required to do that. If we go down to 32 of that circular, the FAA recommends the guidance in this advisory circular for airports that receive funding under federal grant assistance program, including the airport improvement program. See grant assurance number 34. And we'll get the grant assurance in a minute. It's on the very back of the document, but I'll go ahead and read grant assurance number 34. We're going to go through the others in a while. Policies, standards. Policies, standards, and specifications. It will, not if I want to, it will, carry out the project in accordance with policy standards and specifications approved by the Secretary, including but not limiting to the advisory circulars listed in the current FAA advisory circular for AIP projects. Number one fifty slash fifty-two hundred dash thirty-three Charlie, advisory circular for AIP. AIP stands for Airport Improvement Program. That money, the grant money that we get is from the Airport Improvement Program, okay? Five-three, I'll refer down to five-three, but you'll have to scum through that thing. During the past century, wildlife aircraft strikes have resulted in the loss of hundreds of lives worldwide, as well as billions of dollars in aircraft damage. I can attest to that. John Brunson, several years, many years ago, hit a buzzer down in Panama, a C-one thirty, the two hundred ten thousand dollars worth of damage, and we had a hard time getting back to our Air Force base. Hazardous wildlife trackings on or near airports can jeopardize future airport expansion. Now, this goes on to say that if there is one in there, if this landfill gets built at its location, the FAA advises or requires us to not do any further expansion at your airport that would increase the airport traffic. Okay. During the past century, weather that have resulted in the loss of hundreds of lives worldwide, as well as billions of dollars in aircraft damage, hazardous wildlife attractants on or near airports can jeopardize future airport expansion, making proper community land use planning essential. That's lost, y'all. Chapter one, finally got through there, but now on chapter one, if you can find that, one dot, one dot, one. And Mr. Wall's correct, it does not apply to us because we are not a Part one thirty-nine airport. I believe the only airports in Georgia that are Part one seventy-nines are Atlanta and Savannah. Now, one point two does refer to, you gentlemen, one dot, one dot, two. The FAA urges regulatory agencies and planning and zoning agencies to evaluate proposed new land uses with the separation criteria and prevent the creation of land uses that attract or sustain hazardous wildlife within the separation distances, five miles. FAA recommends, one dash one dot three, recommends use of minimum separation criteria outlined below for land use practices that attract hazardous wildlife in the vicinity of airport. Please note, the FAA criteria includes land uses that cause movement of hazardous wildlife onto, into, across airports' approach, our departure airspace, or aircraft operations area. We're going to get to that approach that we saw on the road while we were going in. That was a different kind of approach. The separation distances are based on flight patterns, performance criteria of piston-powered aircraft and turbine-powered aircraft. The altitude at which birds most strikes happen, seventy-eight percent occur below one thousand feet, and ninety percent occur under three thousand feet above ground, and National Transportation Safety Board recommendations. All right, I'm going to explain this, one dot two and one dot three. This refers to the five thousand, ten thousand foot that attracts wildlife, all right? That, this is, this confused me, man, for a long time, this thing. If you go over to your little picture map here, this one, right here. You know, it says, it says perimeter A, which is five thousand feet, perimeter B is ten thousand feet, perimeter C is five miles. What that's referring to is this, the, that's something on the airport. The county fixes all these roads that washed out with dirt that they get from the airport that they exchange with us for light county services. Now, they get that dirt, but they cannot allow that burrow to, to, when they fish get in the dirt, they have to cover it up, because if they didn't, it would be a pond there. And a pond would attract ducks, wildlife, within five thousand foot of the runway. That's what it's talking about. We can't have something on the airport. The jump Georgia guys that are out there want us to build a little pond for them, or they want to build a little pond so they can fill them with water and come do some of their crazy jumping where they skid across the water in competition. That's our engineer, FAA, no, that's going to attract wildlife. Five thousand foot is because a reciprocal airplane, a regular aspirated engine hits a buzzer, it does damage to the outside, okay? That's five thousand foot. It might hit a wing, cause your problems, hit, knock out the windshield, knocks out a windshield on Cessna one fifty, it's going to crash. But anyway, however, the ten thousand foot is because a turbine, either a jet or a turboprop, ingests a bird, the engine quits and people die. That's it, they die, unless they land in the Hudson River. Okay, that's missing with that. One-four, this is a biggie, one-four in your little handout. And you can go on the internet and you can actually get the whole thing, it's thirty foot in your long room. Protection of approach, departure, and circling approaches for all airports, all airports. I don't know why it said the other up there, but now it's saying for all airports, the FAA recommends a distance of five miles between the closest point of the airport's operating, aircraft, operation area and hazardous waste attracted. Special attention should be given to hazardous wildlife attractants that could cause hazardous wildlife movement into or across the approach or departure airspace. Figure one depicts an example of the five mile, that's what I gave y'all while I did. Let, let's talk about, we'll do that side. Chapter two, land use practices on or near airports that potentially attract hazardous wildlife, two dot, two dot, two. This section discusses land use practices having the potential to attract hazardous waste, yada, yada, yada. All right, two dot, two. See, well, let me finish, before I change myself. The FAA has determined that land uses listed below are generally not compatible with safe airport operations when they are located within the separation distances provided in paragraph one-two through one-four, five miles. Waste disposal operations. Municipal solid waste landfills, municipal landfills are known to attract large numbers of hazardous wildlife, particularly birds. Because of this, these operations, when located within the separation identified in the signed criteria, paragraph one dot two, one dot four, five miles, considered incompatible with safe airport operations, all right? Two dot, two dot, one, in your handout. AR twenty-one does not apply to us in that we do not have a scheduled air carrier, all right? Two dot, two dot, two does apply to us. Citing a new municipal landfill is not subject to AR twenty-one. Now, we're not subject to AR twenty-one. If an airport and a municipal landfill... Okay, all right, I'm going. Well, shit, that don't bother me. If an airport, a municipal landfill does not meet the criteria of number four oh four seven one A V, then FAA recommends against locating the landfill within separation distances identified, paragraphs one point two through one point four. In determining this distance separation, measurement should be made from the closest point of the airport property boundary, which is way out there, to the closest point of the landfill property boundary. Now, let's go to traffic and traffic patterns here. I've got you a map there with little lines drawn, but I went to Bill Arthur's place today, we got you a big map that you can see over here. See better, we'll go through that in a minute. The distance to Savannah is thirty-seven nautical miles. Really depends on arch control heading. You take off out of Savannah, if you take off heading south, you're going to have to run way around here and then they'll clear your direct plantation, you're going to go more south. If you go north, then you're going to go, you're not going to be real close to the landfill, except under a couple of things. A pilot will fly directly to the airport, denser at the PAPI, from Savannah. This is the PAPI, and what the PAPI is, is, stands for, is Precision Approach Path Indicator. We just spent a lot of money, we spent a lot of money on our PAPIs here, last year. What that does is it's a red light, y'all really need to know this. It's a red light and a white light. This is designed to give you a three-degree glide slope. Now, three-degree glide slope means that you will intercept that PAPI three miles from the end of the runway at an altitude of nine hundred fifty-five feet. Now, we, we make that, we run it off to a thousand feet. Now, if you're going to land on runway five, the runway that's closest to the landfill, that is, is our problem with the landfill. It can be a lot of the place around the airport not be a problem, but here it's in our flight path. If you go from Savannah, direct to the PAPI, look what you fly over, okay? If you go from Savannah, direct to the airport, and overfly the airport and enter one of the other runways, it's not a problem. You're, this is still well within five miles, but this, that, that doesn't pose near the risk, okay? Now, I had, I will tell you, if you're coming to this airport, you're coming to Plantation, because I did this in October, if you come to Plantation, you come from Waycross, Allen, Claxton, and someplace else down there, from that direction, you overfly the way it's going, descending, falling approach into the airport, sending through twelve thousand feet, twelve hundred feet. Because three miles out, you don't want to be a thousand feet, there you go, you want to be down to traffic pattern altitude. So you're going to come over this landfill, I guarantee you, you'll fly right over it. You want to come fly with me, I got an airplane, I put you in at one time, we'll go up and we'll see where all this sits. It might be useful. You're going to fly right over that landfill, okay? And that's the problem. The Savannah traffic, the majority of Savannah, a lot of Savannah traffic are young people learning how to fly, your sons, your daughters. They go down to Savannah, they take their lessons down there and they charge you golden prices, but they come up, they're high airport because they don't have the traffic that they have in North White and Delta and everybody else who took off. And the fuel here is about three dollars a gallon cheaper than the gas in Savannah. So they come up here, so the problem that you get is, I got thirty-three, thirty-four thousand hours, I hit a buzzer, you know, I might be okay, I might not. But if a twenty-five-year-old kid that's got thirty hours hits one on solo, he's got ninety seconds, he's got ninety seconds to get there. If that landfill is there, someone will die. It's, it's, it's just, I'm sorry, I didn't want to do something. It will be liable, the city and the county will be liable for that, because FAA says, don't do it, don't do it, don't do it. All right, the next thing, and this is also a big thing, one of the things that we agreed to, that our grandparents agreed to many years ago, when the government gave that land and that airport to Scrivin County slash Savannah, is that military aircraft can use that airport anytime they want, and y'all have all seen C-one thirties flying around all over the place. The Savannah Guard unit comes in and uses the drop zone. This runway right here, this short runway right here, it's, it's the army uses it and the Air Force uses it, they got something, whatever it's on the name board. They come in, and this is extended center line, that's runway three three. They come in on this extended on center line, depending on what they're in, they might be flying, and they, sorry, y'all can't see this, this is, they come in and they make their drop. Now, if they're escaping, they've got another route, there's always a minimum of two airplanes, three times, a minimum of three times a week, okay? Every other week, there's three airplanes a day, minimum three times a week, two airplanes a day, three times a week. And also, three night sorties, minimum of three nights, so they're going to be flying over them. When they escape, they'll do another route. They'll generally, get out here, they can fly all around the airport and go back and pick up their next low-level route, which might be three hundred feet, might be five hundred feet. Then they'll come back in and they'll do another one. Now, there's two problems that arise. When they escape, they'll turn back in this direction and head back to Savannah, okay? Head back to Savannah, right over there. Eight times going to be a problem, nine times going to be scary. Because I can't put out an advisory and say, look out for birds, they won't allow that. They cannot, this is suggested, why don't they turn right? If they turn right, they turn over the airport, and that's a no-no. You can't turn over an airport's traffic pattern. All the traffic patterns are opposite side of the airport. Now, another problem that poses on the tenth of this month, we have a C-seventeen, y'all may have seen the C-seventeen flying all over on a Saturday and a Sunday. A C-seventeen, C-one thirty, the army drops all the time at the airport. They did it Thursday a week ago, Thursday a week ago. This is only a thirty-five foot, foot runway on this, thirty-five foot, excuse me, thirty-five foot, that's bad. It's thirty-five hundred foot long. So if you've got an airplane full, a C-one thirty, you carry forty-six, a C-seventeen, my care is Scrivin County, I don't know. But you can only get a limited number of jumpers out in one pass. Probably eight in a one thirty, use both doors, you might be able to get twelve out both sides. And then you hit the end of the runway and the guy goes red light and you make your turn out, you do what we call a race track, well, first, bump this up, everybody, come out the ridge there. You do a race track. Now, the, the distance in this turn, this turn, because y'all took the geometry, the geometry, by your airspeed and your angle of bank. In a C-one thirty, in a C-seventeen, you drop at a hundred and thirty knots. You get out here and you accelerate to a hundred and forty knots in a C-one thirty, and then you make your left turn and go back out there. Now, if you make your left turn at, say, a hundred and forty knots and twenty degrees of bank, which got a lot of guys about getting sick, that's all you're going to do, you're going to roll out, you're going to roll out, depending on your angle of bank, student, you're going to roll out somewhere between two point one miles, two point eight miles, two point five miles, somewhere between. This is all going to put you right over the dump site, the proposed dump site, everyone there. Okay, now, there's no way around that, the helicopters that jumps, and I believe last Thursday, they dropped a hundred troops. Now, they, they could hold it in a little bit tighter, but they're still going to be awfully close to that, and the H-sixty-fours are going to come back and they, and they drop a lot of people off. The problem that, with this alert is, number one, you skate, the drops, they're generally dropping a thousand feet or twelve hundred feet, fifteen hundred sometimes for paratroopers. They're dropping what they call containers, which they drop at six hundred feet. So the altitude's varied between fifteen hundred and six hundred feet. Now, Sunday, the C-seventeen was dropping from, it's a combat drop, which is eight hundred feet. Okay? Now see, we can't keep the military from doing this. They come in, they don't interfere with our traffic, but we can't say, "You can't go." When he escapes and picks up his hundred and forty knots and turns back down, he's eight hundred feet when he goes across this center. Now, if you go out there sometimes, they're supposed to call me and get approval to come through this. They, they drop at nine. They come from California, they come from Charleston, they come from West Carolina. And they come out, they drop at nine. I don't want somebody hurt because they drop at nine. And they go over that landfill, okay? That's, that's a real problem. And it's one, eight hundred feet is awfully low. I don't care how big the airplane is, I don't care how big your engine is, eight hundred feet is awfully low. We have a letter here from Colonel Clay. If you'll turn over. Colonel Clay was the past commander of the unit. Says, "Dear Dewey, looking at the location of the planned landfill, it is very bad spot for us. It would be on the downwind of our racetracks. Generally, the racetracks are flown at fifteen hundred, thirteen hundred feet. Our normal run-in is on runway three-three. I could foresee issues with birds. Our running altitude there will be anywhere from three hundred to five hundred feet AGLs above the ground or visual around twelve hundred MSLs of SKE, that's something else. Also, our departure route back to Savannah takes us right over the area where we're recovering runway ten to Savannah. If I had to say so, I would say that the size of the landfill will negatively affect our low-level training and our airdrops due to an increased bird casualty. And we need to reach the grant insurance, where we give the money back, it's very likely. And the liability.
Good evening. My name is Damon Mullis, and I am the executive director at Okeechobee River Keeper. My address is five twelve Durant Avenue, Savannah, Georgia, three one four oh point. I would like to thank you for giving me this opportunity to share some of my concerns about the proposed landfill. I'll order Don Snack, we'll speak after and share many more. Okeechobee River Keeper is a nonprofit advocacy organization who speaks on behalf of its supporters who will clean drinkable, visual, swivel the waters. Our mission is to protect, preserve, and improve the water quality of the Okeechobee River Basin. Not just the river, all the water of the basin, that includes the groundwater, the aquifers. And that's my mission, not to police these raw landfill takes from the limitation. But my mission is to stop landfill. This proposal is a threat to that drinking water that we all rely on and the waters that we rely on for fishing and recreation. We could be certain of one thing. If this landfill is approved, the liner will fail. The liner will fail. It may not fail the first day, but it might. But it will eventually fail. Anyone that says otherwise is misinformed or disingenuous. It's common sense. The liner will eventually fail. That's very problematic. Because the soils and high water table of the coastal plain region make it a particularly very bad region for landfills. Mr. Wall stated that himself in his presentation. Besides proximity to Brady Brats, wetlands, recharge zones, and being only two miles away from the river itself, only exacerbates the threat of the eventual liner failure. Okeechobee is a blackwater river. Blackwater rivers are characterized by having naturally low dissolved oxygen and very low assimilation capacity. What that means is it is very vulnerable to pollution. If this landfill is built, this region will bear the burden of its pollution long after the thirty years post-closure requirement. This is an unfortunate truth. This landfill poses a very real threat to health, safety, and the environment, well-being at this point. Now, understand, there is a mountain of money to be made in the landfill business. There's nothing wrong with making money. Even a mountain of it. The problem is, the amount of pollution that's gonna be left that the citizens of Scrivin County are gonna be dealing with for centuries. Literally, centuries. Who wants to leave that type of legacy? Please protect the amazing natural resources of Scrivin County and the health of the citizens. Stand for clean water. Stand for drink, clean drinking water. Stand with these citizens. If you do, Okeechobee River Keeper will stand with you. Recognize that the commission denied this landfill. It does not meet the requirements. It is not needed. You have all the justification you need. Thank you for your time and service.
Good evening. My name is Don Stapp. My address is box one-three, one-two-four Savannah. It's hard to cover everything that hundreds of people want your address in an hour, certainly not in the remaining twenty-three minutes. You don't need to listen to a lawyer pontificating, where they do that all the time. What you do need to do is listen to the local people. Because, for example, Mr. Morgan is a prime example of taking what's known locally and applying that as opposed to just some book and just sitting there and hiring and finding somebody in Jacksonville, Florida, to sit there and tell him what he wants to hear, who tried to investigate you guys. I stood before you guys back in November and said and reminded you, and nothing has changed, that your job, your mission, is to deal with planning and zoning for Scrivin County, not for Mr. Wall, not for the entire southeast region, not for the coastal area, not to help him make more money, it's to deal with what's best for the community. All you have to do is literally drive around this county and you will see absolutely what the feeling of the community is as it relates to this landfill. There are more than fifteen hundred signature competitions, probably close to two thousand now. There are literally signs throughout the entire county, not just the F-4000. And people saying, "We don't want this, we don't need this." The underlying premise of zoning, of conditional uses, of planning, is to sit there and address the health, safety, welfare, comfort of the community. Mr. Wall had that knowledge yet. That's your overarching goal. Mr. Wall wants you to believe, while the state is going to take care of it for you, it's the old, "Trust me, we're here from the government. We're gonna help you when EPD's budget gets slashed, EPA's budget gets slashed." So now he has to resort to asking Mr. Mullis to join a citizen oversight board when it's his job to do that. I've been practicing law for thirty-five years, I would not have a job if companies did what they were supposed to do. I literally represent communities across the state, from Blue Ridge to Valdosta, from Americas to Augusta, that have to deal with the fallout from badly planned, badly designed, badly implemented, and badly maintained facilities such as this landfill. I remind all of you that this is the same group that tried to site their facility in Bryan County seven years ago and got nowhere, because the Bryan County commissioners understood what the risks were. If this is such a wonderful project, why are they in that county's just lining up to say it's weird? They're not doing that. So what Mr. Wall is telling you is, you know what? Ignore the planning and zoning that's gone into this community and what our plans. You have spent inordinate amount of time, effort, energy, he said, money. You don't have to. You're trying to determine what the growth of this county should be, how you want to handle it. And you're being asked to basically throw that out the miller. You're supposed to, you're being asked to ignore the efforts of Mr. Hagan and his staff. And what do they say? They say, "They're all wrong." And Mr. Lovett stands there and spent sixteen and a half minutes telling you what was wrong with the process, and what else was he doing? He was telling you, "We've sued you once already. We're gonna sue you again." Their next breath, what did he say? "We want to be a good neighbor." Now, I don't know how things work in Mr. Wall's neighborhood. I promise you, in my neighborhood, we don't tell people, "We want to be a good neighbor. Oh, by the way, we sued you, and we're gonna sue you again." That is simply an effort to intimidate you, to sit there and make you deviate from what you know is common sense. The effort that this community has put into demonstrating to you why this landfill is not in the best interest. You're being asked literally to just say, "Mr. Hagan, we, we" It made a word you're telling us. The staff spent how many hundreds of hours establishing a sixty-two-page departmental review? And they want a quibble with that. The joke, the truth of that is, even the statements they were making, saying, "Well, our engineers, the true ground set soil boyings are adequate." No, please read it. What they say, "It's adequate for preliminary determination." Throughout this process, everything they say is a base bottom preliminary. What else do they say? I don't know. Because every single time they come in front of either you or the commissioners, it's a new plan. It's a new proposal. We're gonna do this, we're gonna do that. I, I can't keep trapping it, I really can't. We started and literally tried to put together a chart of, "Well, this time, it's gonna be this. This time we're gonna have recycling, this time we're not gonna have recycling. This time we're gonna have three jobs, this time we're gonna have ten jobs, this time we're gonna give three community drivers, you know, comprehensive and big drivers, scholarships. Now it's ten, we're gonna have a park, we're gonna do this." Come on, folks. Please don't leave your common sense to the side. He touts the economic benefit of this landfill. Again, please go back, review what he has said over the years, over the time, over the months that's gone by here. He says, "Well, we have an independent analysis." And I talked about the Seabear Study from Georgia Southern University. What he doesn't tell you, because they don't want to tell you, is, oh wait, that's an independent study, Georgia Southern University, respected university. No, look at the records behind that. It was based upon information provided solely by Mr. Wall and his staff. They acknowledge there was no independent verification of that. They don't tell you, Mr. Wall actually edited that report before it went out. What kind of independent analysis allows somebody to edit a report before it goes out? And that's who you're trying to, you know, appease? No, folks, please don't. The other thing I really want to emphasize, because I know this is a point that continually gets lost because legal nuances. Mr. Lovett spent a great deal of time talking about the regulations of Mr. Wall, but he said, "Well, they take care of everything." And I've said this before, and I'll say it again, and I'll say it again in every community, the law in Georgia allows you to set standards that are more stringent than the minimum standards of the federal and state law. What does that mean? It means you don't have to rely on the distinction between subtitle B, sanitary landfill, municipal solid land, waste landfill. You can set the standards, the procedures, and the restrictions that you want to have imposed in this community. You've got to remember that, because at the end of the day, that's your task. You cannot sit there and advocate your responsibility and say, "We'll let the state take care of it," or "Don't worry about it." Later on, the state will make a determination about whether the soil is suitable or not. So, that, I get you. Again, to try to address everything that, all the misstatements that have been made, can't do it in an hour. I'll simply ask you to do two things. A, use your common sense. And B, look at the efforts that your staff has put into this in terms of giving you a very detailed, thorough assessment of the application.
Would you tell us your name again, please?
Sure, Mr. Mullis.
Sure, I'm Dr. Donald Stapp, Mr. ACK.
I'm Noble Boykin, and I own property thirteen oh nine Dorsey Clark Road. I'm not actually mainly addressing anything, it's in Savannah, two thirteen, thirty-eighth Street, Savannah, Georgia. I'm not, well, I'm just saying too much, because so much I just said, and everybody wants to talk. But a couple of things that I think needs to be brought out. This county has the right to do planning and zoning, approved, conditional use or not. They have asked for approval for conditional use for the whole nine hundred and some odd acres site. And so that's what's before you, for the whole site. Now, the part they say in their conceptual plan, probably the actual landfill, is eighty-eighty acres. And then they said, "Well, there's no wetlands on that. We comply with the rules because eighty-eighty acres is not under, is not a, doesn't have wetlands." But you have to look at the entire site. And once this, if y'all approve this, then this county loses local control. Because all this county can do is apply zoning laws. Once it's approved, if later on it's sold, which is still to national listing. And in fact, the lawyers have been properly copying some of this stuff, the lawyers for Waste Management. So, then you go and you deal with that, and if they want to get something changed later on, they'll come back here, because the zonings are set. They go to Atlanta to EPD, and it's out of local control. And EPD unfortunately is not always well-funded, and many times just stamps, they approve it. So you lose all local control. The other thing I just about, too quiet, is on property values. They were talking about, "Oh, it's not gonna affect property values." Come on. There's studies, I've got some, I put it in the record, all sorts of studies. And in fact, they say, "Oh, it's not gonna affect property values, but what it does will give you some money back." Property values are known to be affected adversely in relation to large landfills. And the closer you get, it drops off about ten percent of value per mile in terms of how close you are. According to studies, that'll publish studies by independent universities and think tanks, and I'll put that in the record. The last thing I'm gonna say is the Scrivin County Future Land Use Plan. You know, this is the plan it's zoning for. The land use plan shows that this area of the county is the prime spot for future residential development. It's close down to Effingham, it's close to Bullard County, and it's commuting distance to Poole. So that is the prime spot for development. So it's like taking a beautiful apple and putting a big brown spot at the bottom of it. And say, "Well, let's develop here." That's, that's the county's future land use plan, is to have nice quality residential development there. They said, "Oh, well, houses that cover our landfill." But the studies also show that if you put a landfill, you get some development, but it's not quality development. So you have to look at all that. So you have to look at all that, too, if you're talking about planning. And I'll go, I'll go on before the record.
Good evening, John McPhee, thirty-three twenty-two House and Dale Road, Savannah, Georgia. House and Dale Road, I go a lot of places in the state. First of all, it takes a lot of courage to be here this evening. I'm a public boy, many of you know me in the county. So it takes courage here to stand for you, because this has polarized the community for the last several months. There's, there's good people on both sides of the aisle with this application. So, and I sincerely mean that. Thank y'all for hearing all the information this evening. Thirty-three twenty-two House and Dale Road, I've been working for the airport, I've come here on behalf of the board of education. I've come here on behalf of the residents of thirty-three twenty-two House and Dale Road, a wife and three girls, and beyond that, my neighbors. Waste is an issue, y'all have heard all the facts. For it, you've heard all the scientific information against it, or a lot of it. You've got notebooks and binders here, and so I'll get lots to sit through. I don't know how much you get paid to do this job, it's not, it's not worth what you're having to go through with this issue. But back to the real issue at hand, I speak as a resident. When I go places, people ask me, how do you spell House and Dale? If you're in this room and you're from this county, you probably know how to spell House and Dale because you're from here. And that's where the real root of this issue is. And I haven't heard a single person with an address that ended in a three, oh, four, six, seven area code stand here in support of it. So, in short, I guess I'll leave you with this to consider. The residents of Scrivin County, that's your job. It's my job every day when I go to the schoolhouse. Consider us when you make this decision. There are loopholes in our statutes and lots of legal ramifications to consider. I understand that. We understand that. You always remember, as an educator, when you're teaching a class, the first thing that you hear and the last thing you hear. Okay? So I'll leave you with this. The first thing I heard here tonight was, if you don't approve it, they're gonna sue the mess out of you, this county, and continue. That's what I heard. That was the first thing that I heard as a lawyer. The last thing I would like for you to hear is that the residents, in majority, I believe, do not wish to have this landfill. Waste is an issue, okay? It needs to go somewhere, there are other solutions. But again, I think I speak for the majority of the county. The waste needs to go somewhere, but nobody wants it in their backyard. And that's where this is going, is in my backyard and my neighbor's backyard. So please be considered. For the people that you represent, Scrivin County residents, consider all the facts, and please consider to vote down this application. Thank you.
My name is Renee Ball, I live in eight two two eight House and Dale Road, three, four, six, seven. Our, our house is the closest downtown building. The little black box on there playing is us. We have family land that joined the proposed landfill. The whole process has been a nightmare for us. It began when we found out by word amount, not by Mr. Wall. The first official notification we actually received was by the zoning board in February. That's not good, if you remember. The zoning office did a thorough job of outlining how the conditional use application does and does not make Scrivin County's solid waste plan. I commend them for their time and their effort. How the proposed landfill affect our community, based on common sense as well as some research. A landfill set in a rural community will negatively impact the area. But we have the study that shows it will not affect our land values, our land values. I have several, read several articles that say the opposite, and you've heard other people say that, too. We were told that having this landfill would potentially lower everyone's property tax due to an increased revenue requirement. I agree, it's definitely gonna lower, because our property values are gonna be damaged. Potentially, everyone in Scrivin County can see an increase in property tax because of the adverse effect by the landfill on the revenue generated from our area. Our county's already been sued by Mr. Wall based on assurances he perceived, yet he could not provide a name of cedating those assurances, because he knows that would be illegal. He said the statement was changed. Now the claim, it was to due process that there was assurance. Our commissioners buckled under the pressure in order to stop the lawsuit, because as Mr. Wall pointed out, we're a poor county. I believe they, like us, are ready for this to be over. I commute to work, twenty minutes each way, because I want to live in the country, away from the noises, the traffic, the pollution, all this is such a terrible city life. Many of the neighbors feel the same way. Much of the land adjacent in question for proposed landfill has been in families for generations. The country like we live, by birth or by choice, will be disrupted so Mr. Wall can reach financial benefits. Because let's face it, this is all about the money. Mr. Wall wouldn't fight so hard if he didn't stand the game of regular money, I thought of. In the rebuttal in the zoning office recommendation letter, Mr. Wall states that there's already noise smelling more associated with the dairy. As if to say we should accept the landfill because it will be the same. It will not. We dissmell the dairy pretty strongly when the wind blows from the west. We hear the cows almost every night. We did hear the tractors and the backup signals from the trucks. Landfills smell much worse. And I've read accounts about it permeating homes incidentally. The noises from the dump trucks and whatever she used to cover the trash daily would occur. The holiday and into the evening, and it's at the times, seven o'clock at night. And that cannot be compared to a dairy's operation. What we fail to realize is we choose to live in a forming area, and we accept all that comes with that. What we do not accept is someone bullying their way into our community with promises that we don't know will be kept. Mr. Wall wasn't expecting a grassroots campaign for this. People of all socio-economic backgrounds from one end of the county to the other have come together as one family to tell Mr. Wall, we will not allow him to live in our way of life for his own personal gain. He keeps saying he wants to be a good neighbor. Mr. Wall is not our neighbor, and if we can help him, he never will be.
Michael Newton, five oh one, we're Dale Brown. I'll be brief, I'll just hand in, I won't just turn it on the record. What I have here is a brief statement, and also I won't enter into the record. A book of signatures that were collected by citizens asking the board of commissioners to dismiss the proposal for the landfill.
My name is Alan Stewart, sixty-four oh seven State Shore Highway, which is beautiful downtown Cooperville. My family owns property on Dorsey Clark Road, less than half mile from the airport, the proposed landfill. I have seven, seven items that I wanted to discuss, most haven't been covered. The first item I want to look at is five percent of what? Five percent of the dollar is a nickel. Five percent of how much trash per day, per week, per month? What, one? Point two, our county infrastructure. Looking back over the past year since this has been going on, we had a serious problem down in Jasper County, South Carolina, Hardyville. We had a fire down there that took months and months to put out. It was a, it was a recycling assembly area, it wasn't a landfill. I'm not sure whether this is a landfill or a landfill or recycling center, it's going back and forth many times. Our county fire department is primarily volunteer. We can't expect them to go to a fire at a landfill that may take months and months and months to extinguish. The other infrastructure problem that we may have is our county road department. They are beat to death right now, and, you know, God help them, they're doing a great job. But we can't expect for our county infrastructure to be taxed and overtaxed and overtaxed. I thank all you people that are in opposition to this for coming in life. Thank you very much, or whether it's nasty, we appreciate it. If you'd like to turn this man, this document in, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Chairman, I want to say, I gave all of y'all a copy of my comments at the beginning of the meeting, and I want to, that's the end of the record.
Brian, do you have some?
That's the end now, right? At their time. How many times Mr. Wall had this? And King mentioned Mr. Wall.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I just wanted to say, please, please do this evening. My name is Mike Backwood, I am a consultant, government affairs consultant for Atlantic Waste, among our clients. You have a two hundred and twenty-seven page document in the record that thoroughly went through all of the regulatory frameworks that applies to an airport of this, this sort. What I want to stress is that we find that this airport is not subject to six mile rule found in forty-nine USC forty-four seven one eight D, which was created by the National Aviation Act in nineteen ninety-nine. That was to protect commercial air traffic. It did reference a five mile distance and landfills, but that is not incorporated into the statute itself. This is subject to Georgia DNR's rule, which is the five mile rule, which requires certain notifications to both the FAA and to the airport operator after the site suitability report is finished and pursuant to the conditional use process. The FAA advisory circular that the chairman of the airport commission referenced, according to their language, provides non-regulatory, non-mandatory, and is not legally binding. Quote, "Do not be relied on for permanent enforcement action or other administrative penalty, and contains a recommendation that states the FAA recommends against locating a landfill within separation of distance distances", basically the five mile rule found in the Georgia DNR regulation. But this is simply a restatement of language that was found in AC one fifteen fifty-two hundred thirty-three Bravo from two thousand and seven. There is no new policy or regulation or standard established. And advisory circulars are intended to provide advice and informative, interpretive, and explanatory materials. In fact, in a case in the Court of Appeals, Second District, California, from March twenty, twenty twelve, the court held that federal aviation administration, FAA, safety standards in an advisory circular are not FAA regulations and do not have the force and effect of law, because they have not gone through the regulatory process to be adopted as an official regulation. One of the discussions is not creating a hazardous wildlife danger, but the problem is, the current operations of Green Meadows Dairy Farm creates significant hazards to aviation, according to FAA rules and regulations. Fortunately, wildlife strikes have not materialized into a problem for Plantation Airport. And in the period from two thousand and eight until twenty eighteen, there was a single wildlife strike on and around that airport. However, there is a wildlife problem at the airport. There is a notation to navigators that said deer on and in the vicinity of the airport. Keep in mind, that airport is surrounded by agricultural land and is not fenced. So wildlife has full access to that any time of the day or night. The statement from the departmental review is misleading. They're talking about other federal requirements when property was heated to the city and county, grant assurances. Again, we say that Plantation Airport has failed to protect that airspace simply by the fact that it's not fully fenced. There's also a statement that they're talking about not being located within two miles of the bombing range. Where are many, many, many files from towns in bombing range that exists? The airport individual cited a colonel. We've had some conversations with Brigadier General Thomas F. Grabowski, commander of the Georgia Air National Guard, and he has stated that the Air National Guard, quote, "does not have a position on this issue, and that this establishment of a proposed landfill will not have an adverse effect on their training missions." They can work around it. Not a limiting factor in continuing ability for Plantation Airport to apply for and receive state and federal funds, nor a limiting factor in the growth and further development of Plantation Airport, as none of the fifteen Georgian airports with municipal solid waste landfills within one point nine, five point seven miles have had any limitations on their capability to grow. And in fact, Georgia DOT continues to pump money into those airports, and some of those were recent recipients of about twenty-eight million dollars. And I believe Plantation Airport was the recipient of one of these to extend runways. The letter from the air traffic control specialist, that's not a fact. That's an opinion, we let that lay where it is. So in closing, it's a fact that Plantation Airport will continue to be eligible for state and federal funding. And in fact, I represent the Savannah Airport, and work very closely with the lobbyist board of the Georgia Airports Association. We have been working over the past two days to get a piece of legislation, which would be a constitutional amendment, out of the Senate Transportation Committee that would make airports such as Plantation Airport eligible for general obligation bonds for loans or grants to allow for continued expansion, growth, and development of airports. The airport is not subject to the six mile rule established by the Air Twenty-One legislation, doesn't have qualified service, already has a threatened hazard, wildlife hazard problem, is nowhere close to a voluntary bombing range, and the establishment of the landfill, according to General Grabowski, would not have an adverse impact on ANG operations in and around Plantation Airport. I think it's pretty tough.
So thank you for, passing, you serve as an airport?
I am their state and localized. And I will add that they are not involved in this, and you may have heard from us.
My name is Robert Crasco, I'm a professional geologist. I've been licensed in practice here in the state of Georgia. I was EPA's advisor on Subtitle D. I trained state regulators on Subtitle D. It's kind of interesting, I'm, I'm a scientist, I'm licensed in practice, based upon facts. We hear a lot of things here, the landfill's been a contaminator for this many years, those are not facts. Facts are when you collect information and you evaluate that. And that's what happened with Subtitle D. Subtitle D came along to prevent municipalities, counties, anybody doing whatever they wanted as far as landfills, and they designed a set of criteria. One of those criteria was a composite liner, based upon scientific studies of how that would contain waste and not allow contamination of groundwater. We see a lot of sites, and people talk about this landfill contaminated this, this landfill contaminated that. We've seen some landfills up there, I've worked on some of those landfills that were contaminated. Those were landfills that were contaminated because they were unlined facilities. Well, there were unlined facilities that then were part of the site, the lined facilities. The unlined landfills are leaking everywhere. And what we're now finding out, because we understand the chemistry of the subsoil environment, we're finding out that the natural environment degrades that and cleans things up. And those landfills, those old landfills, fifty, a hundred years old, are cleaning themselves up. So they're not going to be a threat forever. And the new landfills are designed not to let that liquid out of there, and we don't see that happening. So when people say, oh, this landfill is new modern design, that's not based on science. It's not based upon EPA deciding they were gonna take over management and design of the solid waste landfills, because it was done incorrectly, inadequately, with poor science. And they were going to impose rules and regulations and criteria, which are, these landfills, the new landfills are subject to, which protect people. And they do. Thank you very much.
How much does he pay you?
Yeah.
Okay, we can't have any of that.
I'm Andy Shepherd, MMAI designated attorney general, I'm on twenty-two hundred Century Parkway Atlanta. I've been doing this twenty-three years, I worked for most times at the point that, as you say, more people who are doing things like this, or people who... more people who are doing things like this, or people who are focused on things like this. In December, I was engaged by Mr. Wall and I told him flat out, "I don't hide that, I don't want to let you edit that." I throw everything at the problem and what shakes out, shakes out. I take a retainer upfront, if it doesn't work out, or if I say something contrary to what he wants to hear, so be it. I don't write the report, he doesn't pay me the balance of money. Kind of the normal flow. As far as my experience shows, I work on everything from small privacy issues to five-section lawsuits against the Navy where they change from F-14 jets to F-15A superburner jets and increase noise. And increase noise closer to the noise source, all that kind of stuff. So what I did was study eight landfills in rural settings, 90 sales. And within those sales, looked for pairings of sales where there were similar, you know, characteristics between two sales pair, just based on distance as a sole criteria. After doing that pairing, I actually called people involved directly to the sale, got their experience as far as the breadth of their search for the property they bought, the experiences they had, any discount they paid, and what they would have done differently if they had to do it all over again, kind of thing. From the pairings, and one of the reasons why a lot of these studies are kind of wrong is because they don't take into account all the characteristics of the study. Like Mr. Wall said, you know, there's some landfills that have 5% of the sludge, some have 50% of the sludge. So different noise factors are going to difference. Odor factors are involved in the results. So what I did in my pairing was say, "Okay, here's a 10-acre site that sold in 2019 that had a 2,000 square foot house that was built in 1980. Here's one that's 2,000 feet away, here's one that's 10,000 feet away, this one's sold over 20% less." Ah, that's, you know, calls. Well, I mean, call the people, you dig a little deeper and turn about that even though those same houses sold for less money, the one that was further away had been renovated, this one hadn't been renovated. So you go through that same kind of process and boil down fact instead of fiction and you don't just run raw data, you run verified data with people who are involved in things. And at the end of the day, out of the 18 people that I spoke to directly, none of them said they had any issue with it other than occasional trash, whatever thing. So no, no person said they paid less for it than they would have normally. Everyone said they researched sales, they didn't just walk up and say, "Hey, I need 20 acres, can we pile this and I don't care?" They had researched, they had looked at the, you know, smells that drove around the area, they had studied the deals. And none of them said they paid less than what the going rate was if they had bought it where they bought it, or a mile and a half down the road, five mile down the road. Out of 90 sales and 18 interviews, either all that's wrong or that's the story. I felt like...
My name's Kevin Shaw. My name is Kevin Shaw, 1779 Union Church Road. I am not a hard gun, I'm not from Jacksonville. I'm not a veteran, I've met Mr. Wall for the first time this evening. So I'm not here as a proponent to Atlantic Way, but I'm here as a self-proclaim expert, so to speak. I've managed, in the last 31 years, approximately 17 landfills, transfer stations, 10 recycling centers, including MRFs, recollection covenants, several cleanup sites that I've had to clean up dumps from the 1960s. And I can tell you that the current design, the Subtitle D landfills, are the state of the art. Anybody that says that they're foolproof, they're as close to foolproof as you can get. However, with a caveat, they have to be well managed. I've been around several brand-new landfills, what they call greenfield facilities, where I have managed them from the ground up. And I could tell you that when managed properly, they are a good asset for any community. They are an economic benefit to any community managed correctly. I can tell you that on the several instances where I've actually been involved with interviewing the locals and creating host agreements, that the host agreement that's about to get into communities' agreement. What I can't say is, if approved, you guys have the power. You have the power to control what comes in, you have the power to, to name your prices actually. So it's not all about money, it's all about being a good neighbor. Mr. Wall says that, but as a landfill manager, I can tell you, I'll walk that line. I've lived on three landfills adjacent to them, I can tell you that were well managed because we did not have overflights, we did not have groundwater issues, and they were managed well. You can ask my wife, God bless her. The, in fact, the areas that I lived at, the wildlife on the facilities were greatly improved by the programs that we developed. That being said, again, you have the power. There are several things that you can do to guarantee and host agreement. There's several things you can do to make sure that the area is limited. How much sludge, probably? You guys have all the control, all to be negotiated, and it is assignable, if the host agreements. If it's sold, they are assignable. I've heard a lot of talk about that, it's going to be sold. They are, the agreements are, it's foolproof that they can get, I've been there. So anyhow, that's all I have to say.
One more question, are you currently employed by a facility that's next to there?
I'm actually over 70. I'm a director of a large facility, a large company.
What company?
A large company. Name the company in easy ways.
Hey, okay, okay.
Out of time. He was out of time.
Gentlemen, I want to thank you for hearing all this tonight. I appreciate the crowd for being calm and we hope that you do vote this in favor. We will be a great asset. One thing I can guarantee you is, I am here, I'm not some company from Texas or Phoenix, Arizona. I live in San Antonio, I come up here and mill and survey, now dove hunting here up my entire life. If there was ever an issue, I would know about it. I can run this facility to be a great asset. I want to have the opportunity to be a great neighbor. I want the opportunity to give jobs to the people of this county. I want to see this county grow, I want to see it do great things. I want there to be people that are proud to have us as an asset. I appreciate your consideration, thank you for your time.
I'd like to say one more, my name is Paul Wall. I would like to give a quick word of adoration.
Any more documentation or anything?
Okay, if not, we're going to take about 10 minutes to go over what we got here. We're going to take about 10 minutes to go over what we have given to us and then we'll let you know.
Okay, everybody, first I'd like to thank Atlantic Way Services for a very well-written application. This is not the first time we've worked with this documentation, there was some new stuff cleared in tonight that we haven't now reviewed, but there's been quite an extensive review process. Would also like to thank the citizens that came out to express their opinions as well. This has been a very long process, if you guys have heard.
I didn't mean to, Andy, I swear.
You just wanted to flash footage of the work.
Somebody stole the pot.
So our job and planning is on is to review the conditional use application. This is not the total application of a landfill, this is for conditional use. At this time, I would like to make a recommendation that I would recommend to the board commissioners that we deny the conditional use for this application.
Warren's not voting, he's, because he had gone for the work for them previous, so Warren is not voting on it. So we have a motion to deny and this goes to the board commissioners, everyone makes a decision. We recommend, it's not, we don't decide, it's they decide. But that's our recommendation, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Don's second, Don's second. All right, the votes are now, this meeting is adjourned.